Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Final Budget Hearing and Business Meeting. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to first say that the March 2019 Treasurers Report is available in the business office. Also, I'd like, resolved to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meetings of April 11th, 2019, and April 23rd, 2019.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Just before we go on to Pride in Putnam Valley, and will not be a long delay, I just want to say that tonight is the final budget hearing. Ms. Figarella, what side of the table is she on now? Okay, Ms. Figarella will be presenting it after Pride in Putnam Valley, but if anybody has any comments, we will not be waiting till public comments section. You will be able to speak during Ms. Figarella's comments about the budget. And without any further ado, Dr. Wills, Pride in Putnam Valley.
Actually, I'm going to ask Mr. Burrow to come up, and I'll come up, but he will be the prime mover of this portion.
We're very, very proud of our athletes.
Of our athletes who are here this evening, and we want to make sure that we give them proper recognition for their excellence on the field. With that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Burrow, who will do the honors.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wills. Our first Pride in Putnam Valley this evening is for Kaitlyn Pellegrino. We also invited her coach, so hopefully he'll come up as well. You can come on up. So, Kaitlyn is one of our incredibly humble athletes. We try to extract information about how she's doing across the season, but all of a sudden it seems that she's won a lot, and we find out about it. So, she really exemplifies what we are doing here as far as student athlete, and she has received two awards, recognition from her fellow Section One and the state Section One, which would be the achievement of the Journal News being recognized as Westchester Putnam Gymnast of the Year. And she, yes. An incredible accomplishment. And she also was voted the Section One sportsmanship recipient up at the state tournament, or down, I think it was on Long Island, this one. So, congratulations for representing Section One. And here's your Pride in Putnam Valley award. Congratulations.
Most of my daughters were gymnasts. I went to many, many meets.
Dr. Wills, there's someone you're taller than. Sorry, sorry. I'll get serious.
Okay, our next awards are for our four section title winners in the sport of wrestling. And for, yeah, you know what? Come on up first. We have three of our wrestlers here, which we'll introduce, and then assistant coach, Chris Bruno, who has also gone through our program. So, if you're not aware, the wrestling program, it's a very small team, so in order to have four section title winners, the core of that team is very, very strong, and the time and dedication that they put in, in the off-season is apparent by how well we're doing with such a small team. It's a grind. It's day in, day out, you know, in your face, and you gotta do it. You gotta prove it, and you're the only one walking out there, you know, just like Kaitlyn. So, it's an incredible achievement, and I think we shocked a lot of Section One this year with the four winners. So, we have Dean Appel. Will Corano is not here. He's training. He is currently training for the national championships in Greco and freestyle wrestling. That's a private group that he's involved with. So, next we have Dustin Koskinen Falls. And we have Rolando Lopez. Congratulations. I think we're gonna have to make some room up here for this one. We have the cheerleading team with us, most of them anyway, and this team has, for the fourth time in a row, won a section title, and has gone up to the state tournament to represent not only Section One, but Putnam Valley. And I was able to go up this year. I've had, between the snow and my son being born and various things, I wasn't able to go up the last couple of years, but I was able to go up this year, and it's just incredible what this team does when they set their mind to it. When we finished day one, they had put on probably the best routine that they had put on all season, and everybody on the bus and everybody on the team, coaches included, everybody had a really sense of calm and just, we had done it. That was what we came here to do. So, wherever the chips fall, doesn't matter. And it really felt so good. It felt like we had won already, you know? It was just a really great feeling. And we went back that night. We had a nice evening dinner and so on and so forth. And then, when we went the next day, you know, at that point, because we were so satisfied with how we did the first day, we just left it all on the table, and they just kept calling out fifth place, fourth place, third place, and we're all just shocked, you know? But we did it. We came in second place when we went into the finals in fifth, correct? That is an incredible accomplishment, and that really shows that this group, when they're focused and when they set their mind to something, they just come together and get it done. You have to be the ultimate team to get that kind of a routine done. It's full dedication across the board, and that includes the coaches. So, I'd like to bring everyone up, and Coach of the Year of Section One, Regina Albano. There's a lot of you. I want to be able to see everybody. Maybe if you come around this way here a little bit? Try to organize the names here.
So, the ones that aren't here have either names or...
Of course. We just left, we left a few out on softball there, too. It's raining. So, Gabby Alvarez. Dariana Daly. Rose Jankarelli. Alexandra Jacobs. Laura Jones. Leah Lundberg. Gianna Milikian, I'm sorry. Daniela Milano. Angelica Ordóñez. And Adriana Rao. And Francesca Reyes. Gillian Rodriguez. Teresa Sigmund. Megan Stevens. Ashley Stockinger. And Cassandra Tenasaka. I promised myself I would get it right, and I didn't. And Keiko Waters is also out of softball. So, congratulations. It was an incredible, thank you for allowing me into your experience up there at the states. It's something that I certainly won't forget for a long time to come. And let's just get another round of applause for Section One Coach of the Year, Regina Albano.
Yeah, Jeanne will do the photo, but I just want to congratulate all of you, because I've watched some of your routines, and just the exactitude required, it leaves me breathless sometimes. I get very worried when I see the, but, what you're able to do, but it takes so much teamwork to do that, and so much belief in each other, and it's just a beautiful thing to watch and to see you all here this evening. We're very, very proud of you for what you've accomplished.
I'll take some pictures, maybe over this way, if that's...
Thank you, ladies.
And, Mr. Brunno, I just want to add, what I love is that our former students are coming back as coaches. This is the second wrestling coach. I think I had to get over calling Evan Newer "Mr. Newer." Now I have to call Chris "Mr. Bruno." And I know that Ms. Albano, who has well deserved this Coach of the Year, has coached a former student as coach, who then has gone on to other things. So, it's great that I expect some of these girls or boys will be back one day coaching, which is really excellent.
And I would like to just say a word about, to thank Mr. Burrow for his support of our athletes and his development of our program and the respect that the program has, and it's a young school, but we are really seen in a very fine light. Our reputation is excellent, and, Mr. Burrow, thank you as well.
I keep going to the wrong side of the table. Ms. Figarella, the final budget hearing?
So, tonight is the budget hearing, which is the last night that we hear any kind of questions or comments regarding the budget. It's not a full presentation of the budget, so, and just to announce the date of the vote, which again is May 21st, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the elementary school. The absentee ballots are available and can be turned in right up and through the 21st at 5:00 p.m., and that there is also three candidates running for school board seats and two positions that are going to be up for reelection. So, if you want, I don't know if you want to give those names?
The three candidates running this year for the board seats, three candidates for two seats are in ballot order, Janine Ruffo, Jeanette Yeder, and Thomas Sawyer.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments on the budget itself? As it's been presented, I know the newsletter is going out. The newsletter is posted online. All the information is online for the budget. The extended version of the newsletter is online, so all of the information can be had there, but the piece that gets mailed out to everyone in the school district who is eligible to vote will contain the budget notice, which we cannot publish till seven days, six, or I believe it's seven days before the actual budget vote. The rest of the information here is all financial, so we've attached some of the pertinent information to that mailing. And if anybody has any questions or comments now, I'll take them, or anytime, you can contact me, jfigarella@pvcsd.org, or I'm available in the business office every day and for any questions that you might have.
I would just encourage people to vote. I know that our voter participation has gone down, as it has all across New York State, but this is an opportunity to show support for your school, for your staff, for your children, and I know a lot of people think it doesn't matter, but your voice does matter. We're selecting two board members and approving a budget, and you really, your support would be greatly appreciated.
And I just want to add, where coaching might be a labor of love, putting the budget together is certainly of labor, possibly of necessity, and I want to thank Ms. Figarella, as always, for the professionalism, the persistence, the perseverance that she and all of her staff in the business office do in getting the budget out, and why we think the final budget hearing is today. Getting this newsletter out is another production, because that seven-day turnaround is really very tight. So, our great appreciation, Ms. Figarella, to you and all your, and please extend that to all your staff.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for bringing that up. Not one person in the business office is not involved, in the district office, Ms. Molino and all of the district office staff are not involved. They're all involved in the budget process, and putting this, the document together, the information throughout the year, and their support for me and each other is just so outstanding.
So, how will the newsletter be delivered in homes, to homes?
It will be delivered through the mail, as it is addressed to current occupant. However, the courtland section of the Putnam Valley School District will be by address, because we have to address those individually. So, everyone should be receiving it. I believe they're gonna be mailed out on the 10th? No, no. I have the wrong date.
No, it'll be right around there, just within...
Okay. So, again, six days prior to the budget, you should be seeing the budget notice halfway folded newsletter somewhere in your mailbox, so to look out for it and get that information. We've also gonna appear at, I believe, the town board meeting tomorrow evening, give some, a few details about that. And again, I want to remind everybody about the STAR exemption and all of the new things that are involved with applying for STAR, staying with STAR, requesting STAR information. To go to our website to get it, we have a text button on the main page that will lead you to the website for New York State that gives a detailed amount of information about the new changes with STAR. And it's important that you go there and you get the information that you need so that you can continue to get it.
Just want to emphasize one more time, not only you get the newsletter, but if you go to the putnamvalley.org site, pv, putnamvalley, pv-csd.org, the whole budget is out there with all the details and all the presentations, so you can get the detailed information besides the documents you'll get.
Yep, and they are available in each of the buildings in the main office and at our library, at the senior center, and some of other locations around town. I know we've placed some so that they become conveniently available for people to pick up.
Dr. Wills, is there a insight Putnam Valley for this year's budget?
Yes, yes. That was, we actually did all the production of that last week, so...
Sometime this week.
Sometime this week. It will go over to the town to ensure that it's on theirs, but it'll be posted on our website as well, but we also get it over to the town. And then tomorrow night, Jill and I go over to the town and actually give a presentation. It'll be short, because they have a very heavy schedule, but that will be also on their video, so...
Again, a reminder to get people out to vote and do their civic duty.
Since we're in the same vein, I'm going to ask, we're gonna, let's move up number four and talk about the night of the vote. The board needs to determine who will open and close the polls. On May 21st, 2019, polls open at 6:00, they close at 6:00 a.m., they close at 9:00 p.m., and any current trustee that is running for another term may not serve as chairperson of the vote. So, do I have anyone able, interested, willing to open or close the poll?
I'm able to do it.
Okay, so, Mr. Cohen, you're our early bird often, right? Do you want to do 6:00 a.m.?
I can be there to open the meeting.
Okay, and will you close?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, Ms. Parmly, close. Okay, now moving back to number three.
Just one last point, just, those two names will be added to the motion under the consent agenda.
Yes, they're still gonna be in the consent agenda, that's right. Might as well talk about it now. Number three is a discussion of continuing a moratorium on approving admission of non-resident children of professional staff. This is something, 2011, that's so many years now. There was a time that many districts had a provision where school staff members had the option of sending their children tuition-free to district schools, and around 2010, 2011, many districts, we were one of the last, put an end to it, because it added a level of unpredictability to class sizes and financial repercussions towards our district residents. So, however, we did grandfather in any children already attending the schools, and why we have to continue to discuss this as a moratorium, as long as those children are still in attendance.
There's two families that I believe will ask again.
Okay.
I think a total of, I think we're at three children.
Right. So, is there any comments on the board about this continued moratorium?
Well, you know, I, I am always pleased when our staff has such admiration for our district that they want their children to come here. I also know it makes it so that those staff members are less likely to have to hurry home, and they tend to stay and...
Become part of the community.
Yeah. So, but I also understand the balance with the taxpayer, and I don't know if we could consider tuition or something else, but I don't want to necessarily close the discussion in terms of, I'd like to know whether there are any staff members currently that are interested. Staff members have spoken to me and seem to be, but, and seem willing to pay tuition, so I, I don't know. Maybe that's something we want to think about.
It's certainly something we can explore. The issue is always the unpredictability.
Right.
And at a time when you didn't know what class, if we had five students enter one grade, that might mean another teacher, and that being a burden on the taxpayer, but if we add a tuition component, that is certainly something we can, I don't want to say table, but talk about it another time.
Because class sizes eight years ago were different than they are now.
Right.
As far as the cadre of students.
Right. I don't know if it's a discussion to have with the Federation of Teachers, because I think it's mostly teachers. I think most of our other staff are Putnam Valley residents, so see what, how, what their feeling is about it and how we could serve them and also serve the residents of Putnam Valley.
The only, one of the caveats in the mix would be, you wouldn't want to start a student in the process and then end up with a housing development that, or a big influx of new residents, and then you have the issue of making...
Now, we have this one extra student.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's the, one of the issues, not that I expect a big housing development to kick in.
I was wondering if you knew something that I didn't know and heard that.
I've got a couple billion dollars to spend, but no, I think that's just one of the concerns, and it might not, it wouldn't be necessarily a housing move, but it could be just a transformation of the district.
Could be.
The other issue I think that we have to consider and talk about is the laws have changed in terms of students with disabilities and district of location and district of residence, and if they're classified, and what that means for the district of residence who holds the IP.
What's the difference between district of residence and district of location?
Yeah, it's complicated. I mean, I don't know if we want to discuss it tonight, but in some, in a quick answer, it is if, right now, we don't have any private schools in our district, so all of the students that go to, let's say, Kennedy Vet R's, where the district of residency, all of the responsibility is on the district of location to provide services.
Where they're actually going to school.
Where they're actually going to school, to provide those services, and then there's these crazy formulas of billing and where billed portions, and so it's complicated. And I agree that we should certainly have the discussion about faculty. I just need you, I need the board to be aware that some of those, you know, we should, we should have those conversations as well. Those should be included.
Certainly, for years, the New York City police departments, fire departments have always wanted their members to reside in the city, because it gives a certain amount of extra emotional, as well as physical investment in their, in their jobs, so it is something you should be looking to.
And this was, those of us who were on the board, this was a painful conversation. I remember we were in the middle school. I remember where we were sitting.
Yeah, it was very hard.
It's one of those board meetings that has stayed with me, because I agree, Ms. Parmly, 100 percent, there's an investment when your teachers are part of the community and stay around for their children's games and their students' games by extension, so if we do feel we are in a different time, it is eight or nine years later, enrollment is different, but there are things to consider, and fiduciarily, our responsibility is first and foremost to the taxpayer, so...
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
It was a much better conversation than 11 years ago.
Whatever it was.
All right, moving on to reports. I do not see Ms. Casey, so I do not see a PTA, PTSA representative. Our student representatives are very busy. It is, are we at AP week?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a very busy week for our students, often those that are on the board are involved with APs. So, Dr. Luft, that brings it right to you. You're on the side.
Sounds good, sorry. I'm mixing it up. So, along those same lines, I wanted to quickly recognize our elementary and middle school students, as well as our high school students. The elementary and middle students recently completed both the ELA and the math assessments, and our high school students are now involved in the advanced placement test, so we tend to hear a lot from neighboring school districts about student struggles and kids having breakdowns during the test, and really sort of not having the fortitude to continue through the exam, and it's really something that we don't see here in Putnam Valley. I think our students go into the exams with a high level of confidence, and I think that shows throughout it. I think students are committed to the process. We have some that certainly use extended periods of time, now that the tests are untimed, but any student who, when they're done, they're done. We certainly do not encourage them to continue beyond their point when they're, when they decide they're finished. But I really want, I know there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into arranging those tests, and I really wanted to sort of give some credit to the students, because they are confident going in and they get the job done, and I'm anxious to see how well they did. The high school has the opportunity to participate in a learning technology grant through Putnam Northern Westchester Bothies. Our teacher is Carrie DeCiana. She's been busy building a blended learning course. The way the grant works is there's a development phase, a pilot phase, and then obviously a revision phase. She is undergoing, she's actually taking a blended learning course about blended learning, so that's how she's learning to build the course, so they meet in person as well as do work online, but I think it's an exciting opportunity. We're gonna pilot it in a very controlled environment in the school, where the students are here, where we get to determine the level of independent work versus teacher facilitated work. But I do want to just recognize the importance of these types of learning skills. I think that we're teaching students time management, prioritization, and other skills that we know will be essential for them when they leave us and move on to college and careers. So, I think this course is a great way to start to offering those types of opportunities for students to build those skills within our controlled environment. We recently had a meeting at Innovative Classroom Academy, and you should be happy to hear. I know that the request started in September, but the teachers began working on Ignite presentations, so they'll be presenting their presentations to their colleagues during our meeting in the beginning of June. the beginning of June. And then I would like to schedule a couple teachers to present their presentations before the board, the first meeting in June. So I know there's been some questions, and I've provided updates throughout the year in terms of the work that they've done, and I think this will be a great culminating project and a great way for them to sort of quickly share information about what this has meant for them, as well as, we could have conversations about, this is something that we plan to continue next year twofold. One, beginning a new cohort of teachers that want to start fresh, and then coming up with a way for those teachers in this year's cohort to continue to a lesser extent, but provide them opportunities to continue to grow as a professional group. That's all very exciting. This week, we had another facilities meeting with our construction managers and architects. The topic was an important one, one that I get asked many questions about, and it was really in terms of the sighting for where will they be parking, where would they be staging their equipment, how will they be accessing different parts of the campus? So we had a good conversation, I think we have pretty good plans. They're working on drawing up plans, sort of a Google view of the campus, and they'll identify where the sighting will be done. Primarily, it will be done, obviously, on the far end of the campus, outside of the cafeteria on the middle school side, and then back behind the high school gym for the health and wellness sighting. And that information will be shared with the facilities advisory committee, and certainly something that I'll share with the board once it goes through that advisory committee. So that work's getting done, but we're trying very carefully not to infringe on the baseball field and to not mess up our traffic pattern that was so creatively designed this year. So there's a lot of things to consider, but I think we'll come up with a pretty concrete plan. Just quickly, wanted to recognize many important days that have recently passed. Administrative Professionals Day, today is Teacher Appreciation Day, there was a musical at the middle school, national and junior honor society inductions, and then my sort of farewell for now to my colleagues and the 50 or so eighth grade students who will be leaving at 5:00 AM tomorrow for their trip to Washington, DC. So I'm sure it'll be an amazing trip and an amazing time, and I wish them all luck. Thank you.
I can't believe it's already the time for that trip. We started talking about that-
20 years.
20 years ago.
[laughing]
But it certainly seems that way. All right, Dr. Will, perfect segue.
There's not much left, but I want to reiterate-
Yes, absolutely.
A couple things. First of all, the trip to Washington again, I have to, I'm very grateful to those who are going, to those who are, who have been doing the planning. Maria Belfont has helped a great deal, she's been an intern at our middle school, she's administrative intern, has helped a great deal with the scheduling and planning of this. Jeanette Mistrata is going as an administrator to help, and of course, Mr. McCarty. But there are teachers going as well, and there is a real excitement about this trip, you know, a tremendous amount of attention to detail, because we know we haven't gone for many, many years, and we want this to be a good example of what can happen. I think the most difficult aspect of this trip has been the rooms.
Absolutely.
Room decisions. So that's something we will be working on for the future, how to avoid some of the last-minute kinds of things that, and it's, and as I've been saying, because we haven't done this for many years, there is that feeling that people, everyone wants to feel very comfortable about the trip. But I, I'm hoping to be there tomorrow morning, let's see, good intentions, you know, good intentions at 5:00 AM, we'll see.
Please pray to heaven.
We start our, as has been mentioned, we started our AP exams here, and again, a great deal goes into scheduling those and ensuring that everyone has their appropriate accommodations and so on for those. We have the spelling bee for next Monday that our PTA is doing over at our elementary school, which I think will be a very exciting event. We've had open houses at our elementary school, and these, I've heard, have been very joyful experiences for the parents, and I think it's wonderful to see how much they love their school. They love the way their children are cared for at the, at the elementary school. Again, I was at, I visited the places where the PTA have shared their lunches, I managed to take a little something from each one, and I can tell you the taste has-
Good for you, Dr. Will.
It was excellent. It was wonderful at each of the schools, at the elementary and the middle school today. And, you know, again, just sharing the, it's the enthusiasm and the energy and commitment of our teachers that makes this work. Without that, we don't have the kind of school district we have. We have, you know, these teachers come in, and I spend time talking with them about the students. They really care about the students, and that's why parents feel that they can trust the educational process. And the same is true, of course, we don't have a special experience for our administrators, but without the responsibility that they take, and all of our staff, every single member of our staff makes it work, from the bus driver in the morning when the students get on, to the teaching assistants, the aides, everyone in the schools makes a difference. And our nurses too, this is Nurses Week as well. We have wonderful nurses at our schools, they've been keeping up with, you know, these many health issues that have occurred, including the measles situation in the state, and they're very much on top of all of it. We're looking forward, there's going to be a sustainability fair at the elementary school, and we're looking forward to that. That'll be coming, we'll hear more about that soon. So, again, you know, there's, when people are thinking about the budget and thinking about the school, what we like to just ask people to think about is, you know, what it means. And their presence at, their presence, every, you know, we want to see people come out to vote. That's why, you know, we spend a great deal of time trying to get the information out, and we're available to answer questions, and Jill is amazing in her, the way she handles questions, the way she goes out of her way to meet with people and talk about the budget and the work that goes into this process every year. It's something that is done with the meticulousness that we're all very, very proud of.
At this point of meeting, the public may speak on any of the listed agenda items?
Public.
Okay, would you please? Moving on then to new business, Mr. Ferraro, you have the best one to read. Number one.
Taking my pause.
A little dramatic.
Yeah, try to put on the glasses, make sure I read it correctly.
Okay.
Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby appoints Jeanette Mistrata as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction in the Director of Curriculum and Instruction tenure area to serve a four-year probationary appointment effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2023, an annual salary of $165,000 effective July 1, 2019. Ms. Mistrata holds initial certificate as school building leader and permanent certification in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and grades one through six. Second.
Questions or comments?
Just want to speak quickly about the process. So, we actually received over 100 applications for the position. A small committee reviewed the resumes and screened in person 12 individuals. Four finalists were moved forward to a committee, so actually two committees. The two committees consisted of 26 members. Those committees included parents, students, teachers, administrators, and community members. So each of the four finalists was asked to present information to a group of 13 individuals and answer some questions, as well as participate in an intensive committee interview. So afterwards, that those 26 members debriefed for almost two hours discussing the four candidates, and I must say that I was thrilled when Ms. Mistrata rose to the top of those conversations. Some of the things that were mentioned about Ms. Mistrata is that she's been a loyal, hard-working, and knowledgeable administrator and teacher in the district, that she's presented an ability to build relationships and make connections, connections across buildings. People recognized her pedagogical knowledge and her overall caring and approachable personality. It was noted that Ms. Mistrata was a successful teacher, successful assistant principal, and I believe will be very successful in this new role. So I'm very much looking forward to working alongside her. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we vote?
She's also-
You're containing yourself, Dr. Will, I didn't think you could.
No, I can't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I can't, I cannot. I will say-
She can't contain herself?
No, she cannot contain herself. No. I, I-
I can't either, I have to say.
Yeah. Natalie wants to say something too. This is, this is really a wonderful evening, a culmination of many things for me, I feel personally, in seeing the way our administrative team is going to come together for next year. I'm, you know, for me, this is an emotional experience, but it's one with a great deal of joy, because I've worked with Ms. Mistrata for, you know, all the time that I've been here, and I've seen her, it's very, it's a very expansive view of what her position has been. She's done everything that you could do as an administrator exceptionally well. But I was also impressed with her reputation and the actual accomplishments that she had as a teacher. And this really attracted me to thinking about the role that Ms. Mistrata could play. Her classes did exceptionally well on brand-new state assessments as they came in, exceptionally well, not just for this district, but for, in terms of the state. And it's her way of looking at data, it's her way of teaching and engaging students, I saw that. And so what we are seeing in bringing Ms. Mistrata to this role, and by the way, this was seen by everyone on that committee, was that she is a model for what we would like to see for all of our educators, and she's built a tremendous amount of trust. We had people talking about the wonderful observations that she did and the kind of conversation she had with teachers about growth. We had parents talking about the relationships, the relationship with her. And it's, there's another thing, curiosity. Curiosity is a very, it's one of those more ephemeral qualities that not everybody has to the extent that I see in Ms. Mistrata. This year, she was doing some of her work for her district leadership certificate, and the way she went at it at the different schools, going to the high school, going to the middle school, learning about what was happening there, learning about IB, talking to teachers, this is a very special kind of gift. It's, and it's something that she's giving with wholeheartedness to the school district. So it gives me a great, great pleasure and delight to be part of this experience right now.
Absolutely, and I just, I'll be quick. I just am so proud and honored to work with somebody like Jeanette. She has exemplified truly what a great leader, you know, is able to do with, with people, and that is really, the foundation of everything she does is about relationships and trust, but it, but it allows that ability, that, that ability to gain the trust and support from Jeanette allows teachers to take really some great risks in the classroom, allows her to talk about really big issues with curriculum and instruction, and, and I just, it's an honor. Thank you.
And you've all spoken so eloquently about Ms. Mistrata as a professional. I'd like to talk to her as, quickly, as an example of her kindness, which I have used before to describe. We were sitting at Paco Pugingo a couple years ago, and we had been there all evening, and I was watching my card fill up, getting all excited because I could practically taste that Michael Kors bag or whatever, not looking at anybody else's because I was all excited about mine, and Ms. Mistrata leaned over and said, "I really hope you get it, I really hope you win." And the next number was hers. She was that close too, but she was more like rooting for me, so that talks to the person, how that Jeanette is. So I think without any further ado, unless-
I just wanted to add to that, did she give you the bag?
No. Because I'm as nice as Ms. Mistrata, and when I realized that her card was full, I wanted her to win too. So it was quite the mutual admiration society, but thank you. Anything else from anybody? So without any further ado, all in favor?
Aye.
Resounding aye. Okay, I have to add, she traded the bag to someone else who wanted it.
Thank you.
I will also add that Mr. Ferraro has expressed some concern about being on a board with a Jeanette and a Janine at meetings. The Jays are going to give him some pause.
Yes.
Okay, moving on then to number two, let's appoint a teacher. Mr. Smith.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Deborah Verdi to a four-year probationary appointment as an elementary school teacher effective September 1, 2019, and terminating on August 31, 2023, in the tenure area of elementary at the elementary school on step two of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Verdi holds permanent certifications in nursery, kindergarten, and grades one to six. In order to be appoint, to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APR of effective or highly effective during the probationary term, and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Kinder Camp program for the summer of 2019.
Second.
Questions or comments?
What this is, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, no, go, go.
I never went there though, you know. This is a program that we offer for our new coming kindergarten students. It's like an orientation program where they get to be with their fellow classmates, they get to see the building, they get to see the facilities, and it takes place in August.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the contract for cooperative educational services, specifically computer services, with Southwest BOCES for the 2019 through 2024 school year as per document 167/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
What this is, is BOCES will actually purchase computers and software for us, and they're doing it for the whole districts, all the districts in this area, 20 or 30 districts, and thus we get better prices, and they supply technology services and everything else.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Deborah Carpenter, a nurse from the district, effective April 26, 2019, as per document number 16919 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve items two through seven as appears within the consent agenda section of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
We're appointing the workers for the budget vote and the trustee vote that's going to take place, as you heard, on Tuesday, May 21, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We're appointing the two chairpersons, who you hear, Barbara and myself. We're appointing the workers who are going to work to maintain the machines and everything else, and with, reporting, appointing the inspectors. We're approving the overnight trip for the softball team to participate in a tournament in Connecticut. We're approving a special education program for two students, one at Green Chimneys and one at Easter Seals. We're approving an independent evaluator-examination for one of our students by a doctor from Four Winds. We're approving additions to substitute student lists. And finally, we're approving an agreement for three staff members, which in addition to their full-time assignments, will provide special designated regents instructions for students taking the regents' exams, and they'll be giving one to two to three hours extra work to help fund this, and the money's all going to come from a grant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to open it up to public comment on any topic.
I, I just want to bring up that one of the benefits to having our meetings moved up here to the library is that-
here to the library is that this time of year, we can see the banners of the colleges that our students have been accepted to, and it's only a few, or going to attend. They did have this past week, I guess last week, the first, I guess it was College Sweater or College T-shirt Day, they all came in wearing their shirts. It's just great to see, and I know this is just a sampling, but it's great to see some of the great names of the great schools that our students are going to be going to, which kind of is a nice culmination of to get to the end of the year, to see these things here as part of the board meeting.
And really, the end goal of the Board of Education is graduation. So, excellent. Anything else from any board member?
I have three things. First, both Jeremy and Fran mentioned the middle school play. I went the first night. So, first of all, the fact that they had two complete casts was to me amazing. The inner connection of traditional fairy tales, like I'd never seen this play on Broadway or really didn't know anything about it.
It's a brutal show.
It is.
And this was a short-
For adults, it's tough.
This was a short version, but really interesting, the way characters from one fairy tale interacted with characters from another. The fact that the students had total responsibility for all of the-
Tech.
The tech and all that kind of stuff was amazing. And I have to say, I forgot it at home. I went home and wrote this down, the last, the very last song they sang-
Children listen.
Said, "Watch what you say, children are listening. And watch what you do, children are watching." And I thought, oh, that's so powerful. You know, it kind of got lost in the whatever. But I did think that they did an amazing job. So, that was number one. Number two, Jeremy and I went to Bosse's to talk about this super eval platform program. I was, I had been impressed since October. I've had some conversations. I really wanted Jeremy to look at it, because if it's not a tool that's helpful for him, it's not going to be a tool that works for us. I do think, and I went to a NISBA conference on how important evaluations are, both evaluations of the superintendent and self-evaluations. They did stress that we need, you know, that we need specific board goals based on what we feel we need to accomplish, not the district goals, but how are we going to work together, which I thought was a really good idea. The superintendent would also have his goals. I know we have a tool, but the tool we have was written in 2009, I think, or maybe, or about 2009. This platform uses the New York State School Boards Association and the New York State, what is it?
Niskus.
Niskus, yeah. New York State Schools Superintendent.
Uses their performance standards and practices that are essential. And I think that it's, I think it's a good way to look at the role of the superintendent and the role of the board in terms of having focused board superintendent leadership of the district. So, and I also like the board to do a board self-evaluation, and I'd like it done before Ralph Lee's, because I think his input in terms of how did things work and how do, and how should we move forward would be really valuable. So, anyway, so that's my suggestion. I don't know how to, where it goes from here, or who decides, or whatever, but that, that's my recommendation. Yep.
Can you come, you attended as well, Dr. Ross?
Yeah, it's, Barbara brought the tool to my attention, so I did some research, and then we saw it. What I really liked about the tool is, one, the alignment to both standards as well as the goals that sort of will be mutually discussed between the board and myself. The other piece is, it's really a great opportunity for, one, self-reflection. Really, the whole thing is sort of based on a ability to reflect on what's going well, what could we do better, where have we met our goals, what do we have to do to achieve them. So, I thought that was really great. And it's a great tool for myself to sort of push me to reflect on throughout the year of where we're going. The other piece is, it very much serves almost as like a portfolio. There is, there is opportunities to sort of upload artifacts throughout the year that are aligned to certain standards, to say, like, communication with the community is one of our, one of the standards we want to do. So, as things go out, to be able to attach examples of those to it, I think it's a great way to sort of keep almost a running record of what's happened and what are areas maybe where we need to do more work to address those standards. So, I really liked it. It seemed like a really smart, a really logical tool, and I would very much appreciate using it.
And do we get it through just by being members of those associations, or do we have to pay for it?
We have to pay for it. It's through Bosse's. There's a COSER. I don't remember, remember, I don't know if Barb knows exactly what the cost of it is, but it's certainly a program purchase.
Can we get, before that, can we get a demo? Is there a way we can get it, like, can, do they offer demos?
Yeah, I sent you, I sent you a couple of links. I don't know if they're enough. They seem to be fairly willing to do that. It's just figuring out that we can get together and they can. So, I can ask if you, if you want to give me some timeframes or whatever? I'd be glad to contact them and see if they could. Bosse's is also, Putnam Northern Westwood Bosse's is also using this tool, and they're really in favor of it also. They find that it's, it allows you to actually, because otherwise, I've got like folders of artifacts. This way, it's all online. It's easy to see. It's, you know, you can go back and, whatever. So.
Is it any similarity, Natalie, to the evaluation component of my learning plan? And I don't know if we're using that for our teachers yet.
We use my learning plan, we use the Danielson rubric that's on my learning plan.
Right, okay.
It sounds similar. I haven't seen this, but I'll certainly take a look too.
And I like the idea. I don't know, is it something we can do as part of our planned summer retreat, or maybe sometime before? I think we just have to talk about procedures. I like the idea of reviewing and tightening our board practices. I know we've gotten, we practice. I mean, we've gotten into the habits of some things without really thinking about it. Like if a parent responds to the board, I usually respond on behalf as president, but then sometimes the parents are upset that the rest of the board hasn't responded. So, I think we need to really look at how we, how we, you know, every so often, it's always good to look at your practice and see, are you doing things just because you've always done them that way? Or are you doing things because they make the most sense?
And there are five performance standards and rating scales specifically for boards of education, which, you know, with practices underneath, so.
I guess, I was impressed with the details, the thought that went in behind, like sort of in the backend of the system, who can see what, what's foilable, what's a personnel file, when people can see certain things. So, the system has definitely been vetted through large numbers of boards and superintendents. The other piece that I thought was really interesting, and I would certainly share it with members of the cabinet level, would be, they can use it for their evaluation as well. And it could go down to, some districts are using it for administrators across the whole district. Even there's compliance for the principals to use it for MPPR. So, I would certainly be interested, if there was a willingness to do so, to consider piloting it, because I think it's a great tool for reflection and for sort of building a portfolio. And I think that would be something that people would enjoy.
The, what the prices that I got in October was the first year for the platform and setting up the platform, it's $1,950 for the superintendent's platform. After that, it's $1,800 a year, and it's $549 to add on the board's platform. So, $2,500 the first year and a little bit less the second year.
Okay. All right. So, Dr. Do you want to, do you want to possibly take a look at it, or have a training with Bosse's? Can you figure out what makes the most sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're okay. It's just a matter of the collective board.
Well, I will say the three little clip things that I sent you, YouTube videos, whatever they are, are really narrow. I do have, New York State School Boards put this out. I could make copies because it has all of the, it has all of the standards and all of the things for, both for the board and for the superintendent?
We can order copies.
You can just call them and they'll send them to you.
All right, great. I think, I think it's important. Yeah. The last thing is the sort of advocacy thing. I know that everybody got this thing from the Lower Hudson Educational Coalition about what's happening in Albany. So, the main areas that they want, that they say they're going to, we're going to continue to advocate for is, so in the area of schools as polling places, they want, the new legislation wants to provide school districts with the option to reject their designation if needed, and just like the other potential venues can. And schools have not ever been able to. I don't think that's an issue for us, but it may turn out to be. There are, oh, the substantial equivalency guidelines for districts with private and parochial schools. Again, that doesn't apply to us because we don't really have that. The, the limit on paid leave for the voting mandate, that whole, you know, you have to give everybody three hours off.
Right.
They're trying to change the bill to state that school employees shall only be eligible for up to three hours of paid time off if such employee does not have four consecutive non-working hours, either between the opening of the polls and the beginning of his or her working shift, or between the end of his or her working shift and the closing of the polls, which, if that passes, that amendment or whatever, it keeps us in a good place, because then it won't affect us, because all of our teachers-
Have four hours.
Have four hours. They're talking about administrative tenure credit. So, administrators and supervisory staff who are appointed in another district to a three-year probationary period rather than four years, like, we do that for teachers, haven't done it for administrators, so that's on the table. There's an update on the Westchester Sales Tax Legislation, which says that the New York State Assembly passed legislation to authorize Westchester County to impose an additional rate of sales and use tax, increasing the current rate of 7.375% to 8.375%. So, I know that we are not in Westchester, but there are businesses in Westchester County that are in our school district, and I didn't know if that affected us, but I just thought you should know. Charter schools, we don't know. It says if your district is not currently an LHEC subscriber, but we are, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's why we got these things. Okay. Okay, so, that's what's happening in Albany.
That's great. Thank you, Marv.
I'm sorry, so you were going to mention about the marijuana.
Oh, yeah. I forgot about the marijuana.
It's not in there.
Well, there is one on the adult use of recreational marijuana, and the Lower Hudson has not taken a formal position on this issue. However, we will continue to monitor it. But we did get something from the-
The CTC, the Coalition That Cares?
Right.
Communities That Care.
Asking us to send a letter opposing the-
Sale of it.
The sale of marijuana. So, the, they sent like three letters. One is like from a parent, one is-
They're a little bit-
I mean, they're like tweaked.
I think they need to be.
But, yeah, they were kind of-
To make them more official.
But I do think that we should, the CTC has asked, and I also think it's our policy that we should support this and send our support in.
I think the town of Putnam Valley has-
Has put a moratorium on shops.
Yes.
Just in case.
In town.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Barbara. Is there anything else from anybody on the board or any of the staff? All right, then at that time, at this time, I'd like resolved, resume, to, oh, here we go. Nope, I was on the wrong part. I'd like to resolve to convene in executive session for nine matters of the employment histories of nine particular persons. One matter made exempt under federal law, the Family Educational and Privacy Rights Act, and one discussion regarding pending litigation, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments?
The nine people are people who are members of the two unions, basically.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.